I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thought it would be important if we could see delinquent utilities, the amount, you guys have been asking for that, I had Jackie just print that for us. And I would explain. If you look, look at the top, last payment date, and then next to it, period one, that's ten one, that's a bill that's went out October first. Period two is seven twenty-five, because that was a double bill. Period three is seven one. Period four is May twenty-fifth. So it kind of gives you a understanding of those that were delinquent before July, because I think July bill is when we started not charging late fees because of the issues with the utilities.
Now, what if it was part of May? Is it just included in the total?
Yeah, yeah. So, we need that to kind of see what hopefully we need to get aggressive starting now to pull in here as.
What do you say period ten one?
Period two is seven twenty-five, July twenty-fifth, and that was the double bill period. That's why you'll notice, you know, some of those are higher. Then I also have each department's capital expenditure request. So if you want to take, take one and pass it down. And here's gas department. Electric. Utilities. Sewer department. I've tried to, um... I wanted Gary to run me a report to show me what the monthly revenue was and the monthly expenditures. The, the regular, the stuff that's every month coming out. Um, he had difficulty with that because we have a lot of ACHs, I mean, we have a lot of pulls and deposits that aren't done with, you know, that good old check. So, um, he's worked diligently trying to decipher on the bank statements what those codes are and what all of those transactions were. Um, so, and we get, I, I stressed to Tamatha that, um, right now is the time that her bookkeeping credentials are going to have to be utilized. Not, um, delegated because, well, there's nobody in a chair now that I have to delegate to, for one thing, yet. And, um, a city administrator's job is overseeing all aspects of administration, so it's time to get the day and numbers straight, so. Um, this meeting, so, with that being said, we do not have a budget, of course, this is our first, first meeting discussing what every department's needs are, this is our first meeting, kind of looking at what the actual utility arrears are. Um, but as far as knowing what we have to work with, I have a one point four million dollars total number is the last number I received from Gary, and that was, that's still a number in progress. We paid out close to a million dollars in taxes owed. Um, we still have September and October, and I asked why we have September and October? Because Gary got them caught up, then that September payment should have went out, and that October payment should have went out, and, um, I got the excuse that, uh, well, I'm working on this, working on that, I said absolutely not, I said this, we're going to get behind again, and in the same boat again, so it's finances, it's, it's bookwork, it's, it's the budget now. Nothing else. I did to help us offset some costs for the transformer, the rebuilt transformer that we purchased. I've been working closely with, um, MPUA, with Connie Ford with MPUA, and she's been a plethora of resources, so I, I do, I do see an end in sight. It's just not going to be overnight. Um, and one of our struggles is, but I, I'm optimistic about this too, call me a fool, but we reviewed thirty applicants last night with the administrative committee for, and that was just for the administrative assistant that was posted, because the utility clerk and the city clerk positions did not get posted. They got posted finally last night, and right after they were posted, um, this morning, she came in and there were fourteen applicants.
They were supposed to be posted two weeks ago.
Yes. So, um, I've started calling, setting up interviews today, and my goal is to by next Friday to have seats filled, two, two, I think we decided with the administrative committee that we take a city administrator and two.
Utility, city clerk that's already an administrative assistant?
Well, the administrative assistant, um, it'll just be Tamatha, we said three total. So, city clerk, utility clerk, and then Tamatha for now.
So we don't, those people will need it out for administrative assistant?
We'll call them, I was looking at qualifications that they could possibly city clerk to. Do you guys want to hire three? I don't know how we put four people in our budget down there.
Well, I see originally it was the administrative assistant, city clerk, deputy clerk, utility clerk, administrative assistant, is what it was said.
And then we trimmed it down, yeah.
Can the city clerk also need to take your utilities?
Yes.
Because Gary has to do that.
Yeah.
I mean, you get sure like two, but.
Your city clerk is going to be mainly working on, your city clerk is your minutes, your agenda, and your bills payable and your finances. That is the chief financial.
Payroll.
Mm-hmm. Your tax clerk, your chief financial person is your city clerk.
Can we get by with, uh, city clerk and administrative assistant if we have Tamatha as well?
Well, you're, you're going to be telling a city clerk that they're going to have to also be a utility clerk?
And then the administrative assistant assistant. And then maybe that administrative assistant could initially have interested, not left to be considered a utility clerk, sheriff or utility clerk.
I have the minutes for the interview tomorrow night, see what it says, because we know what goes forward, we got people on the administrative committee coming. Everybody know?
For?
Well, we voted on for, for sure, three positions.
For the people, well, he said, uh, I don't think it was ever, we, at that committee meeting, we said, uh, city clerk, deputy clerk, utility clerk, and administrative assistant. When we told him we're posting, and then she only posted the.
The administrative assistant.
We said those four, and last night we were talking to everybody, and then we made a vote on what the official wanted to do.
Now, as you all know, we're still operating off of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and when you do that, all expenditures have to be froze unless it's a, you know, necessary to keep your operations running. But I, I would say one thing definitely we need to do is freeze salaries and raises for this budget year. George, do you want to do any clarification or speak on your?
I wasn't exactly sure how this works, and I do not have any paperwork with you, do you have an extra?
Yeah, we do.
So as far as I, how do you want, do you want me to speak about what it is that is in there for capital? Because I do not have, or, I have no idea about the actual budget, the, the budget, budget, all I ever deal with is your capital.
Okay.
So as far as like electricity and, um, gas, uh, other items that you put in there, insurance, I don't know if you do any payroll into the water and sewer, since ladies downstairs do collect, you know, the, uh, everything.
We discovered that those administrative costs need to be spread out across the budget through every department, because everybody has works with that.
Exactly, so, uh, that, that is, that, that is for your, your, uh, budget officer, which I'm assuming is going to be canceled up for your, your new city clerk, to actually put them numbers in, uh, for the budgets that I deal with.
So you're telling us these are on top of regular expenses?
Yeah, yeah, the way your budget works, uh, or what I've seen is you actually have your operating budget, then you have a whole nother CapEx.
Right, and these are CapEx?
These are all just CapEx.
Now, our, our monthly payment to people services is sixty-three thousand something. So that's a monthly, that's a monthly bill for contracted services with people services. So you have major impact, I like how you rated these, A, B, C, D, E. So tell me the, the main thing, the major impact on operations of the bill is operational shutdown, what you have to have.
What we have to have, which one are we going to start on? Are we going to start on, I guess, are we starting in the capital versus capital?
Uh-huh.
Spending requests, point three, okay.
Looks like A, the first A I C is water plant. On the backside.
Okay, well, do you just want to go down one by one, so if we start, so that actually the first one would be the manhole rehabilitation?
However you want to do it.
Let's go ahead and just do that, and I'll tell you that the, the manhole rehabilitation is not one hundred percent necessary.
Okay.
It is, uh, it, it is def, it's raising manholes that have been buried by paving, by whatever else. And that's actually having Mr. Manhole come in like we did in the past, so we could put this off, and we could take that totally out of the budget and then revisit it again next year, because I will be asking again next year.
Then also, um, make us aware of anything that you spoke about that could, that, now wait a minute. Um, sewer plant cannot be a part of the bond because there's USDA money, we're paying back for that, right, but water can?
The bond.
Uh-huh. If we have any projects with, we can't have any projects tied to the sewer plant and the bond.
Okay, right.
But we can the water.
Yes.
Okay, so any of these projects.
You can also have sewer collection though tied to the bond.
Okay.
It, it can be water or sewer collection, you're just saying it can't be the wastewater plant physically something, because you have the, the, none of the money you borrowed for that went to the collection system. So this is for the collection system, the eighty-five thousand that I have in the budget is collection system.
Okay.
But again, this, this would be very low on my priority list, if, if you're asking me what I'm going to keep, what I'm not going to keep, this is going to go away for a year.
Okay.
So I'm going to just cross that one off.
And then if you have any inside, I'm sorry, I'm throwing a lot, I actually have a lot of questions. Then if you have any insight or any, um, places I can reach out to for any possible assistance, because there are grant opportunities that don't have to be directly tied to, um, a complete audit, I don't think so with what we're talking about.
Right.
There, there are few far between, but I've found a couple, so steer me in the right direction, if you find a direction.
If I have a direction, I will do so. Okay, the sludge pressed polymer in the liners, uh, that's thirty-two five, that has to be in there. That is, I, I don't have a choice on that, that is actually the sludge that's produced at the wastewater plant, it's pressed into a dumpster and then delivered, and then it's taken to a landfill. So that, I, I have to have that. Uh, the generator fuel, uh, we have about three quarters of a tank on it right now, it's a huge tank, I think it's probably a four hundred gallon tank. So, it runs once a week, it doesn't use a whole lot, um, I was just going to try to get it filled up, but we're going to, I'm going back, I'm going to go ahead and just cross that one off. Um, the, the pretreatment with, uh, chemhack, that is extremely important. I really need that for operation of the pretreatment, we did just have a, uh, pretreatment inspection. I'm not exactly sure how it's going to come out, uh, but, uh, so we'll leave that one there.
How much is that?
I'm sorry?
George, how much is that?
Fifteen thousand. Um, the pH probe and the D O probe, I need that, actually, both of them are broke right now, so I'm waiting on the budget to start so I can, I can get that, so we're, I, I actually have some units in here from, uh, from one of my other contracts to satisfy this contract right now, so I, I've been taking it back and forth, I really need.
Oh, okay.
To get it back to the nursing home, so.
Twenty-two hundred dollars for those?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the maintenance on the back truck, the, all that is, is it's suggested that annually we take it to co-equipment, let them go through it. Did you guys do that when, yeah, and it's, did, did they find little things, they replace hoses, they, you know, make sure everything's operational? Um, I think it is really important, we don't use it near as much as other people use it, such as I, when Juven was on the truck for a long time, they use it things every day. Uh, we don't use it every day. So, you know, we had one year, they, they, they went through it all, so I don't know the answer. I know, I talked to co-equipment, they're going to tell me, you need to go ahead and do it. Um, so I mean, really, Juven has more experience than I do, do you think I ought to try to leave this in the budget? Okay, then I'm going to leave it in there?
This will be, it'll be a major, major expense, so.
Right.
The pump on is fifteen grand.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so then, that takes care, so we knocked off the eighty-five thousand, we knocked off twenty-five hundred, so, or eighty-seven five is what we took off of that, I, I can't do that math in my head and see what that total comes to, it was one forty-seven, two hundred, so it should be.
Do they make this on the ten thousand, like, we split between the three, do they use it?
They, they do, but, uh, yes, I mean, it could be split between, uh, electric and gas, but, um, we use it more than anybody. Um, you know, it has been beneficial for Kerry, I think he would say so, but really the gas department hasn't used it at all, so.
Okay.
You know, I hate, I hate, they, they, they have, they have helped us, or helped the sewer and, uh, uh, water departments out, so, so much electric guys have just in their equipment that they have, that they helped us, like, whenever we go out and pull their station, uh, pumps, they, they come out with their truck and pull it, so. I, I, I'll leave it up to you guys whether you split it, but I'm okay with putting it all in sewer this, this year. Uh, the AMI upgrade, that's just, uh, continuing on with endpoints and meter lids and, and other stuff that we need to finish the, the AMI conversion.
How many endpoints do we have? I know there's.
We have zero.
We have zero, and how much of those apiece?
Uh, roughly a hundred and quarter. And then we, uh, we still need some more meters also, and there are about a hundred and quarter apiece also. I can't remember the exact number, I want to say we're needing a hundred, probably about a hundred and forty endpoints, and about half that in meters. Um, fire hydrant replacement, we just have a couple of fire hydrants that have, uh, kind of, they, they, they're out of service right now, and fire hydrants are expensive, uh, but the ten, you know, we, we can, in, in this, we can either replace a fire hydrant, we can also try to rebuild it, some of them are not rebuildable. Uh, but we do have one that does need to be replaced, it's one that got ran over at the corner of, is it summer and, yes, it's summer and, uh, yeah, in Stowe, yeah.
So let's, how many hydrants do we get for ten thousand dollars?
Oh, four.
Okay, yeah, let me tell me, just kind of off topic, since we're talking about fire hydrants, um, I was talking to Chief Enix, and he said the fire hydrant out there by Addison Storage at Gateway Square has some kind of, uh, meter thing on it, where?
Yeah.
Should, so, can people go up there and fill, hook up a hose and fill up water tanks and stuff?
They could, but, but, uh, that, that is for the C comm, the guys that are doing the boring into, well, one of the, uh, boring people in town. Uh, they took the in, uh, reading whenever they put it on there, I have their reading, and then when they take it off, there'll be another reading, so yes, if somebody goes up there and fills it up, it's on their dime, not ours, they will, they will get charged for all the water that goes through that meter, whether they draw it or somebody else draws it.
It's kind of like, sure, is that right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I guess you'd call it that, but they, they're actually filling up their, their, their back door truck, so, yeah.
What a meter is, I mean, you know, they have a reading and.
Yeah, yeah, they're, it's read it, read in, read out, and they get charged, uh, a dollar, really a dollar per hundred is what, uh, is what we.
So you guys put that on there?
Uh, no, it's actually their meter.
Okay.
And, uh, uh, I, I got, I have their reading from when they put it on there.
Chief wasn't, he was confused as to how, how that got on there and.
Yep, it's on there, there's also one on, one out at the airport that, uh, you know, it's similar to the one, well, right across the street from the fire department, there used to be one on there all the time, so it's the same thing.
So this fire hydrant replacement, can we cut that in half?
We can do whatever you would like, uh.
Well, you said you only have one that you needed relatively.
Yeah, but I have the one over here at Farmer's Elevator is out of service, there's one on, uh, Lawn Street, Lawn and, uh, I can't remember the name of the cross street, it's, it's pretty far down. It's, it's out of service.
I can't remember if there was another.
You would use the whole ten?
I would, I, I would probably use the whole ten, it's not, there are other fire hydrants within reach that, that Chief has enough hose on his truck where if he did want to cut it in half and then we just put the other half in that here, I don't think it's going to be a, a, an issue for public safety to not replace a hundred percent of them, because you guys are very, uh, fire hydrant rich, uh, in town. So, you know, I could do two this year and then two the following year. If, if, so I'll go ahead and cut that down to five, and if you find it that you can put it back in there, put it back in there.
Okay. Fair enough.
The tower inspection, I have no control over that, you guys have a contract with, uh, a company that comes in and just does that. It's forty-five thousand, uh, it was forty-five thousand, I don't know what your new contract is, no, I've never seen a contract.
Do you know the company I'm in or not?
Um, S U E Z. S, S U E Z.
Okay.
Who would they mail it to?
Who would they mail it to or?
Give the contract to the new one?
It was, I, I guess, I'm kind of, I, I don't understand.
So, who's it, who's it, who holds the contract?
Uh, the, the city does.
Who would have that?
Uh, they had city clerk, the, some, somebody downstairs, I know Jackie had it. Uh, and then Chris did have it.
Yeah.
Um, it's not you all, it's, no, it's, it's no other, I, I don't, yeah. And it's something that I have talked with, uh, every person downstairs in the past about getting out of this contract at some point.
Okay, because that's what I, one of my things I've been doing is trying to locate all said contracts.
Okay.
So I put that on my list to go find.
Okay, yes, yes, I might have a copy of it, uh, the old one Jackie would give.
At least maybe a number, and then I just, I've been just having to send me a new contract and then I keep it.
Yeah, I think this just automatically rolls over if you don't, uh, get out of it, so.
Before thirty days, before the date on the contract, it automatically renews for the next year, which is a bogus thing on a contract.
I, I will, uh, would you send me an email?
Yep.
Asking, requesting that from me, thank you. Uh, okay, cleaning of the backwash, uh, typical water treatment plant. So, when we, uh, treat all the, um, all the sediment that we pull out of the water goes into these ponds out back behind the wa, uh, water plant as well as, uh, the carbon we use, because that doesn't dissolve, it just goes to the bottom and we kick it out there, well, there is a D N R regulation that, uh, I was not aware of, that you have to remove a portion of your sludge every two years. Um, we will get inspected sometime here in the near future, and when we do, we will get written up for it, we will go into violation for it. Now, do we want to go ahead and put this money in, knowing that the water plant is going to be shut down here in the next year and a half or so? We could kind of play the, play, play the odds that they're not going to get us through enforcement.
And you know what?
Saying this loud.
I know, but I was going to say it, I was going to say it because I know how badlogged every agency is right now, and the probability of them getting to us before we close that water plant down, I, I would be willing to bet on that, so I.
This is going to have to be done, when you shut that water plant off, then you're looking at an entire clean, that seventy-five is only for a quarter.
Okay.
So we're looking at three hundred thousand.
For an entire clean?
Yes, when the plant shuts down, because it's.
Okay, so we're going to have to do that entire clean when we shut the plant down, right?
Yes, so regardless.
Regardless.
If we do this, then.
Then we're throwing seventy-five thousand dollars away, because we could just wait, because we're going to have to clean it all out.
Yeah. Sure.
But you can use funding money for that, can't you?
Yeah, I don't know.
I could, but I, I don't think so, we wouldn't want to give that for.
We're tied into C C W W C, but we've got grant money with that water project, and I don't know if we can cross mingle those, it'd be worth looking into, but I'd be willing to put that off, you also, how do you feel about it?
I would say put it off, but if, I would definitely check into seeing if there's others to take care of.
Okay.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to bet on a horse? Remove it?
All right, the next one, uh, the thirty-five thousand, again, that, that's, I, I really didn't know what this was going to cost. Uh, what it is, is the permangene feed is down at the pump house. So then it takes three and a half to four hours for, once we start feeding the chemical, to make it to the water plant. With the magnates we had this summer, uh, it was, we struggled, we actually drained the plant eight or nine times this summer because the permangene pump didn't work, we're not there to see it, didn't work, we'd go down there every two hours and sometimes we'd catch it, sometimes we wouldn't, and, uh, so by putting the feed actually at the water plant and running out in front of the water plant, uh, down, just on the other side, there's a ditch there, just on the other side of the ditch. It won't, won't impede, shouldn't impede the airport whatsoever, I mean, I'll, I'll work with Dell on that, but, uh, we'll just put the feet there, we want as much contact time as possible, but this is the closest place I know we can do this injection point where we can have control over the chemical, control over the electricity, control over everything.
Okay.
I will have to get the D N R approval for that, uh, it shouldn't have to be engineered, I'll, I'll, with, with the water plant, again, being closed down, I think I could get it pushed through the pilot project. But I think I can cover all of our expenses with that. Uh, go ahead and get rid of the ten thousand, the next one. The, the spectrometer, uh, since the, 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 the water plant is definitely being closed down, I'm not saying we won't need that, because our spectrometer could go away, uh, or it could, it, it could shoot craps off us, but.
We're just really on a gambling load now.
Exactly, it would have to be, it would have to be, uh, an emergency purchase if we didn't need one. Uh, last time this unit went down, I know Hannibal has an extra one, we went overborrowed theirs while ours went in, uh, for repairs, same thing could happen again. Uh, talking about that, actually, do you have, there, there was a contract with HAC for, H A C H, for, uh, all of the, the turbidity units, the, all of our instrumentation out at the water plant essentially. And I know they were supposed to be here already, and they haven't been here, I don't know if it's because we didn't renew the contract because the budget hasn't.
Okay.
Our, our stuff is out of date now, and it has to be cal, calibrated by HAC.
I will look, because I kept all the folders that Blake had in that one drawer, and I bet it's in there.
Blake actually got involved in that one.
Okay, well, I'll see if I can find it.
Yeah, because actually Tamatha sent me something on it a while back, they, they sent her something.
Okay.
And I said yes to everything, and so I just want to make sure that, that it is going to go through. And it is on the other. And it is on the other budget, because that would show up on your other budget. Uh, and then also I would suggest, uh, the tower cleaning shouldn't be on your capex budget. It's the maintenance, I, 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 it needs to be on your, your normal operating budget.
The tower inspection?
Yes.
On normal operating budget?
Yes. Yeah, it's just, 'cause this is, uh, I mean, there's been some other things that are on here that could've went on a normal operating budget, but it would've been capex, so. And then, uh, um, let's see here. So the two hundred thousand, again, uh, we'll, we'll scratch that because of, see, 'cause there was a point when I was worried with the finances of the city that we were not gonna be able to actually, we couldn't produce a, uh, an audit for Canor Water. And they couldn't sell the bonds that they had to take out for, for without our, our, but they since figured out a way to use their own. So the project is again now moving forward, where it was stopped, it was dead in its tracks for a while. So that's why some of the stuff on here, I, I put in there in the event that the project did not get back on track. Okay, so that just leaves the.
Should they take the two hundred thousand out?
Yes, sir. Yes. So the thirty-five thousand in there for the magnate feed at the water plant, um, the tower inspection, and the AMI upgrade on, uh, for water, so. So that's a hundred thousand total for, for water is what I'm asking in capex.
Right. Thank you for working with us on that.
Oh, no problem.
And I will see about the SUEZ contract and the HAC contract.
Wonderful. Do you have any further?
Um, are you gonna be around tomorrow, though? You're not?
You can call me.
Okay.
I've had an observable water conference at Lakeview, so.
Um, I just need some verbiage on the, um, PSA that I wanna put out there about the.
Water meters?
Yes.
And the charge.
And the shut-off valves. I reached out to MPWA and they're, they're, um, conversing within themselves to give me some guidance on when to implement that ordinance that was passed.
It's supposed to be, so the January.
Yeah. So, just wanna make sure I get my words right before I push it out there, so maybe I'll put it together and you can pick it apart.
Yeah, you can email it to me, I can look at it, I'll be right back.
All right, thanks for working with us. Okay, um, Chief James?
Whoa. So I'm putting most everything in ours. Uh, the only thing I would like to continue to try to go forward, it's gonna be body cameras, body armor. Uh, those are two things we have to have, body armor right now is expired for all the guys. I did find on here for the eleven thousand, so that is actually for hard armor. Um, it's about three hundred dollars more expensive per unit, per officer. However, the vest we have right now expired for five years. If we go with the hard armor, uh, that expiration goes out to fifteen years. And also, it's interchangeable between officers, so if we do have any turnover, so we have to buy a whole new customized vest if we're a new officer, we just give those new plates five hundred fifty dollars in vest carrier, they're not good, they're ready to go. So in the long run, that's gonna be tremendously more on savings than the upfronts, not really all that much for us.
The crosswalk lights and signage?
I don't get rid of that.
But how else can we get that? Is that anything through Mermis Safety, was there anything in there?
Right now, the state is unable to work with us on anything right there, that crossing. So the totally get every crosswalk in town, uh, being certified, they're not gonna work with us at all.
Yeah, I had a conversation with the lady down at Hannibal and went through three, four different people down there and they said that we're not A- ADA compliant, and I said, we just put all that stuff in. And they said, well, they did away with the round ones, now they have to be squared.
Oh, my God.
It's, until everything is updated, it's the way they wanted this year and this month, they're not gonna work with us.
Nope.
What's, what's rounded and what's squared?
Well, you look at your, where they put, we put the new sidewalks and the stuff, they're going kind of around each. But they wanna, they have to be, new ones now have to be squared up. Where they come out, they're like T's and stuff, but they said, I said, well, we put them in, they're compliant when we put them in. I said, yeah, but we changed our things now, it has to be squared or T up. They said, we can't help you with anything.
Is that the only thing that we're not ADA compliant about, what else to fit that bill?
That was basically, we talked about different crosswalks and he would look at them on his, on his, uh, computer and he would say, well, this one's not compliant, this one's not compliant, and.
And there, and I, this one is crosswalked right here, it's been marked crosswalk, it's not actually crosswalk, it's the same.
Yeah, and he told me, he said, well, we could probably, uh, get you a light down there by the school. I said, the school ain't even down there no more. So, he said, oh, you, you all been with the new school? I said, yeah, a couple of years ago, I think the new school been built, so, you know, where are you at, Jack?
So the body armor is, there's one we absolutely have to have that. The secondary one, uh, would be the body cameras, that's another, we must have, uh, body cameras now, I mean, you're not gonna get prosecutions.
Right.
So they often not, uh, what I am willing to do on that, though, is we are at the budget for six of them, so that'd be one for every officer. However, um, I can go back out, get another quote, and just do four. That way we've got one for the SRO, one backup, if they shift night shift, I'll give her to them so they can cut that back a little bit.
So what's our body cam- what's the problem with the body cameras now that we're using?
Uh, we've only got one with operation.
We only have one body camera?
Yes, they're, they're sharing over there, we've got one that is kinda intermittent, that works from time to time. They, they live their service life.
I was not aware, we only had one body camera.
Yeah, but, well, I mean, we're, we're making do with it, we can get something done, but, um.
Yes, our own definitely has to have one because of just.
Well, he does, he does have his own, so.
Okay, he does, okay.
There's one that's being used by the officers.
Okay.
Uh, you know, there's, they, they live over their life, life expectancy and time of service, so it's just not good. Uh, with the body cameras, though, I am asking to look at the cloud-based storage rather than the server storage we have on site right now. Um, that is extremely costly at this point, we do the cloud-based storage. Any and all videos we have, we can actually open up to prosecutors, send it to them digitally, they can access it, they can pull whatever information they need. Right now, at this point, we have to get all of this on flash drives, transfer it all to the servers. Anything, everything going to the courts has to be burned on CDs and DVDs, which will go through fifty to a hundred of those every couple of months. And then whenever they lose them, we'll do another fifty CDs over the next month to two months again. So it's very costly. Uh, with the cameras that I selected, the Cobay's, the reason I wanted to go with them is they have a renewal term, so in two years, uh, from the time of purchase, they will upgrade our cameras to the newest system they have. If they have not got a new camera, they will give us a new set of the cameras and repair that. And then they will also do that again five years. That's already built into the subfront cost, that's not an additional charge. And then the first two years for the, uh, for the cloud storage will also be waived and we would just be paying after that. Uh, with their storage, they're offering a hundred gigs compared to ten gigs by these others. So their quotes initially on the storage can be lower, but by the time you calculate in the amount of space we're actually gonna need to store these, you're, you're paying forty-five dollars for an additional grid by on each one of those. So they get from ten to a hundred, we're talking true amounts a month, so.
It says times two, is this for purchasing two body cameras?
No, that's X two, that's the.
X two, okay.
Yeah, it's the.
This is for, I'm sorry, so it's for how many body cameras your quote is right now, six?
So this quote right now is for six.
And you can cut it down to two or four?
Down to four, trying to quote on that here in the next couple of days.
Okay.
Uh, the boulder wraps.
What are those?
So they are, they are the, uh, non-lethal force.
Is that when you shoot the net and then wraps it up?
So it's, it's actually just a couple of string that goes around and they actually wraps, it's made to use on people with mental health conditions. Uh, and basically people that we don't want to hurt, I mean, it's a pain-free way.
So you got people out there you wanna hurt?
No. But it's a, it's a pain-free way of doing this, it's covered with taser, they have to experience the shock when holding stuff like that. With this, it literally just wraps them up, the more they struggle, the more it works. Once they calm down, it, it kinda, yes, works itself, so it's actually not considered a use of force by law enforcement, it's a reaction force.
So does HPD have those, have you?
No, uh, no, nobody in that area right now has any that I'm aware of.
What do they use for, um, such individuals that maybe have mental disabilities or anything like that?
They're, they're with tasers just like we are.
Yeah, okay.
Now, there's been twenty, thirty times in the past year, right, that these things have been very, I mean, are they absolutely necessary? No, what we have, will work, but.
Yeah, I'd say.
Like I said, with these, we also, uh, for the boulder wraps also look for six of those. That's something I would be willing to cut back to, one for days, one for nights, if you all would be comfortable with that. If not, we just grab it and look at it in the next year.
We might have to revisit that next year, so.
That's absolutely fine.
How do y'all feel about that?
I thought we just liked y'all, they taste version, and then we just.
These aren't tasers.
No, these are, yeah, these are. Yeah, these are bars that, that have the, uh, electric components. The other ones, it's, it's non-ADA, it's, it's all under, we're willing for those. Uh, I'm, I'm looking at those at another time.
Thank you.
Uh, I was wanting to readjust our starting salary. I know you all are kind of wanting to hold off on that, but what I would ask is, I've got three positions open right now. I'm only looking to fill one and I've done away with our two most expensive, which is the captain and the detective. So if we put a portion of whatever their combined total is back towards our guys, 'cause they're gonna have to pick up all that extra now, so.
Are, are you guys, is there a lot of overtime going on?
Yes, there's, I'm, we're working on getting that cut back, but, uh.
But you're short.
Yes, I need, I need one more guy, 'cause if we add one person go down or get sick, we're, we're down to three guys. Uh, but if we could look at possibly raising or taking the combination of those two positions, putting a portion of that back towards the guys in their starting salary, uh, that would be as closer, 'cause right now we're set three and a half to five dollars behind what most other departments in the area are, so.
Take a look at that. That's all I can tell you right now on that.
And that's the only three things that, um, worry about before we do this one. Anybody have any question for me?
What did you do with the full face respirator?
Uh, we're doing away with those.
Doing away with that?
Yep, I do have a person who has devised the, the donation to the, uh, community task force for, maybe for our use, so. We have, we have the medical bags, I spoke with the ambulance, they are gonna be upgrading their bags soon, so they're, it's going to, uh, do us their old ones and we'll work with those.
Okay. Chief, you're working with us soon.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, let's see. So Mr. Wood, share all the total capex on the table.
Uh, total for that, before looking at new quotes, would be thirty-two with the boulder wraps or sixteen for just the body cameras, body armor. Sorry, twenty-six with the body cameras and body armor.
So twenty-six thousand, so we're probably gonna, it's probably gonna be a no on the boulder wraps issue.
Yep.
So twenty-six thousand. Okay, um, who wants to go next? Carrie Lee?
Can I say I would chill up a little while?
Here we go, I got mine. Yeah, yeah.
There is a second, there is a second question, but I got it, don't worry about it.
We've got it on the, we've got it both sides.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I, I got it. Uh, after your note with George about the NAGD CD, I did some quick calculation back there. Uh, first thing I gotta bring up is, we do have two young men in a friendship school and we did promise them a daughter and our raise for every year they pass. That is the first thing.
That was already set, did they hire, can't go back on that?
Yep. Uh.
Also, Carrie Lee, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I've got a thought in my head and I gotta get it out or it's gone. Um, so we had talked about and was, did John Russell get the ordinance devised that we were, they had to?
They have a con- contract, which there was things in it that needed change and I replied back to John Russell and I haven't got anything back. If we need to restart that process, let's restart that process.
Let's get that done, I know one of the, the guys reached out and he was concerned that they hadn't got a contract to sign yet, so.
Yes, because I was waiting, more or less waiting for those changes and then get it back to me. But if, uh, if, uh, I'm going to, I'll go back through my emails and whatever that contract is, I'll print it out and I'll let the guys look at it, and we did have notes, I agreed with those notes to make the changes.
Okay.
And.
But he never made the changes and got it back to you?
I, I don't think he did.
Let me reach out to John Russell tomorrow and get that.
Nope, I, I agree, let's get that out over here.
Okay.
Uh, I did go in and do some, uh, grading on the, on the proj- projects I've been doing. First one was Justin and Aaron, as we talked about, uh, load poles is an A, we're, we're down to a handful. So, I mean, yes, that's.
Let me throw out there, when you, when we get that fifty-five thousand dollars probably by the end of next week.
I'm gonna go ahead.
Might need to get, to be able to get these poles, especially with weather coming.
All right, I will, I will go out, I will go ahead and go out, uh.
We've talked about these poles for many days, so I know they're needed.
Yeah, because we're going, well, we just finished an eight pole project on Second Street and don't take too many of those to the upper pole.
Yeah.
And we do have a handful left, Jason, and we do, I hate to say it, though, we do have a little ace in the hole of the line that used to go to the sewer plant, a lot of those poles are still good, so if in emergency, then go down there and yank them out.
Great.
Use them in an emergency. Uh, the five hundred foot, two odd ASA, AS, or ACSR wire, uh, I don't have any of that spare, and we have some of that in, in our system. Like we went to do the JC project and that was two odd wire and I thought I had a whole school of it, well, I didn't have it.
Okay.
So, but this is only a five hundred foot parcel school, uh, fifteen hundred bucks. Uh, and I can reach out and see if, uh, any of the other unions have anything at the time, but this was, I just did this pricing for as is, for new work. And, well, that is like a parcel world from Fletcher and Reinhardt that they've already cut off, so, but that was a few months ago, so they could be gone. Uh, hydraulic tamper's, our tamper, uh, the tamper on the digger truck, it keeps blowing O-rings. I'd like to have that one replaced, we've had it rebuilt before and it just won't hold the O-rings anymore. I said, the second tamper for that and the hydraulic school below that is for the tamper on the backyard machine. We have no, no way to tamp in a pole, if we use the backyard machine and we're back there, except for hand tamping. And hand tamping is a nightmare, especially if it's mud. I can try and get a bucket of gravel in there, but it, it is what it is. Um, that, that was an A, also hydraulic school is an A. Um, that, that was an A. Also, hydraulic school is an A. Bucket truck repairs is a B. Uh, one of the rotations on the old ninety-nine bucket, the bucket won't rotate. It's stuck in one position. You go up there and you wanna bend around the backside of a pole, it won't come down. That's why I moved it down to a B. Yes, it'd be nice, but it's still, the truck is still operation. Uh, digital backlit phasing sticks, uh, the ones we got aren't backlit. It's a C.
Okay.
Uh, wire training hoist, that's also a C. Fifty crossarms, those are definite A. Uh, okay, those with the poles. Um, I just don't wanna get twenty-five, because if we do have one, we break just the crossarms, we can go back and replace crossarms, because there's more of that. Uh, small wire hoists, that's a, uh, that's a C. Uh, the next on the back of that page, large wire hoist is a C. Another shotgun stick, uh, we only have the one for one bucket truck. We don't have one for the second bucket truck.
What is that?
It's a, for hotline clamps that takes the wire and you're going to the hot wire.
Mm-hmm.
And it has a hook on it and acts like a pump shotgun.
Okay.
Where you, when you slide it back, that hook grabs a hold of the hotline clamp. And you can go up and get your hook on it and you pull it out just a little bit and then it'll let it swivel and you can tighten down the connection without being up there and it being a haze. Yes.
Okay. So that's an A?
That's a, well, it's a C, because we do have one. And if, but we gotta, if one truck's using it, we gotta go down to the other truck and get it and take it back to the other.
We're talking about three hundred forty-eight dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Fourty-eight bucks. Uh, basic ox rope block safety kit, that's a B. Uh, it's for lucky guys out of bucket and hand hoisting transformers if needed up the pole. Uh, that's a B, C, somewhere in there. Uh.
How is that process happening safely?
With the digger truck or the jib on it, on the bucket truck. The jib, uh, is a hoist, a winch.
Okay.
On the bucket truck.
Okay.
Where you pick up twenty-fives and thirty-seven and halves pretty readily.
So you feel comfortable with the operating that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, the two fiberglass dead end arms, that's a, that's a, what was it, ten of them? Uh, but, uh, I don't think I'm going to put ten. Anyway, uh, that's a, that's a C. It, uh, what the fiberglass arms take place of is taking place of two wood crossarms. And just having to put one up there, because it's so much fairier and faster application than having to mount two crossarms for a dead end pole or, uh, anything like that.
Okay.
Uh, I did make another side, side note. Uh, I forget what they, but, uh, K N S, uh, dielectric testing is coming in next month, which is just, uh, I think towards the middle of the month, but that is dielectric testing. We have to have this done every year for every stick, every truck. That is, uh, has capability to get into power lines.
What's that, what's that cost us?
Uh.
Roughly?
I think it's around eight thousand, five a year. Well, it, it's a special, you bring in a Tesla coil.
Okay.
And electrifies the whole truck.
And you said next month, that's, that's gonna be a bill coming up next month?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, yeah, test sticks and digger, three bucket trucks in the backyard machine.
Okay.
Uh, AMI, we have had fourteen hundred meters delivered. I know I've been beating this dead horse, but fourteen hundred meters delivered. We have nine hundred twenty-seven distributed. Uh, I may get to the end of it and we may find that some of the three phase meters have not been, uh, accounted for.
Mm-hmm.
So we may have some three phase meters, uh, that may need to be put into the process.
Okay.
So, uh, I'm thinking they're probably around a hundred and fifty dollars a piece. I don't have that number.
Okay.
I was wanting to get to the end of the project and then we could go to that. Just a heads up on that.
Okay.
Uh.
What was that hard item you had on there, that six hundred gallon?
That is a, a back truck. We were gonna split between, uh, gas and street and myself. Uh, since we, man Terry and Kevin agreed that now that they're putting all this fiber in the yards and they did not do it where it's situated where a vault feeds four houses, they go to the end of the block and they're feeding all the way down the blocks and going through yards, backyards. And it ma- it makes a nightmare for us to dig anything. So with the small back trailer, where we can't get the big back truck in there, uh, the small one, we can go in there and he can pothole his gas line, that's what we gotta do. If they have, if it's marked, we can pothole that fiber line. That way we know we will not hit it. And we can pothole around, around our poles. That way they can be removed. Sink the yard or pull out the, pull out the waste or finish digging the hole with the thing or, and then setting the pole. And, uh, what did O B say? He, he could use it too for sucking out.
And the polar cold dust down.
Yeah, because.
Well, this, this seventy-five thousand, that's just a partial cost. Is that the total cost?
That is, uh.
Is that divided between each guys already?
Nope. That's, that was for a used.
Used total cost, right?
Yep. Sorry, my friend, there's some, there's some quotes for the poles.
Thanks.
Uh, these are quotes for the tamper, uh, that I already had, but, uh, might have to, uh, to, to, to be done, because they just, um.
This is sixty thousand. It was a total cost. This is sixty up here. So what was that?
That, that's for the used, used one. I would put in, I put in seventy-five thousand just to be in ballpark, because I knew this one probably wouldn't be available at the time. Because these were broke. This was made back in September of nine, six, twenty-three. All these crashes were.
Okay.
And first started the budget process.
So the bond, um, the, the big substation project is around eleven million, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, the, the transformer is all paid for.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they are also, uh, eaten. When's our next council meeting? Is it the second or the?
Yes, the first Thursday.
November.
The ninth one.
First Thursday in November. Is that date? I can't see.
First Thursday, it's the second. Don't please skip it. We don't skip it on.
Uh, oh, did we vote?
If it lands on the first.
Because, because we're, because of Thanksgiving in there, is what I was saying. Because twenty-third is Thanksgiving.
Twenty-third is Thanksgiving.
So if we did the ninth, then that, then two weeks after that, that would put us to Thursday after Thanksgiving and would be better? Is that what we're saying?
These are spread out.
Right. So council meeting's on the ninth of November and what is the, the last Thursday?
Thirty.
Ninth and the thirtieth of November.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I will call E B and let him know.
Okay.
Because they will be here, uh, on the ninth. Uh, and, uh, Dave Wick, Brad had been talking to Mr. McLean.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, about the project and he was hoping to get some numbers this week, yesterday or today.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't know where he was with that.
I'll call up.
I couldn't, uh, I couldn't pass on after any information about that.
Okay. All right, um, council dude, do you have questions for Carrie Lee? So we're left with, look down here. Without the seventy-five thousand dollar, um, truck, twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-eight dollars. Is that right? I, with the start of the five hundred foot ACSR wire, fifteen hundred hydraulic tamper's, five thousand hydraulic school, sixteen hundred, fifty crossarms, six thousand and shotgun hot stick, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. That's what I have down.
Do you have fifteen thousand per pole?
What did I miss?
The poles.
No, I missed the hydraulic school. So I need to add sixteen hundred, eight, four, four, four. Fourteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars. And I didn't add five percent raise for all electric department and I didn't add the dollar per hour raise. We gotta figure in for Justin and Aaron. It's already been decided on, so.
That has to be done.
Yeah. Yes. Um, so I've got notes checked with John Russell on the contract. We can get that done. Um, and call Joey McLean tomorrow.
And if it's, if I miss something talking to Don, then that's my fault, but.
No problem. I'll just, basically you can say where we're at and.
I know what we were doing.
Yeah.
A lot of iron and tar.
Yep.
I know why I did it.
Yep. We all do, so we'll get it figured out.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie Lee. Okay, O B?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning.
Come on down. You're the next contestant on the.
I prepared. I didn't know we were supposed to be here. I guess you all got my stuff.
We do. And I have a copy if you'd like to follow along and enlighten us.
So you just wanna cut, cut, cut? All right. Yep, yep, yep. Okay. Nice seeing you, y'all. Yeah, I mean, I, I've got, uh, prioritized how, what I was wanting, but I understand the situation we're in and.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Whatever we can get.
So what are we looking at that's your high priority, gotta have, or we're in trouble kind of situation?
Hmm, gotta have. When you say it like that, we don't gotta have anything. We can get back another year.
Next.
That's why I said, I didn't figure we'd be getting much anyway, so. Uh, the stump grinder, why it's on there, the stump grinder Terry and Will bought together.
Mm-hmm.
It's not safe and tame to grind stumps. The ones we have ground just flat. That leaves chunks for when they mow the yards and stuff and complain about that. That's why that's on there. I got, I just want one that, that'll go down a foot and, and he covered up the dirt and yada, 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 and grass. That's why I put it first. Uh, zero turn mower, we use the hell out of it this year. That's why I put that on there. I talked to someone today, might be able to get a couple of them with the price that that's on there, so.
You get two of them for the sixty inch bad boys for ten thousand dollars?
Even though he does have a Viking shirt on.
The shelter houses out at Route J. I think, I think, uh, I've got a ace in the hole there with Department of Conservation, so I might be able to see what they got.
Put them on there just because, yeah, they're probably seventy-five plus years old.
Yeah.
Uh, thought you had to put that on there because I was following in.
Yeah, it's been on there a while. I guess it's been five years.
Yeah. I mean, that's pretty much it. Whichever, however y'all wanna do it, I'm good with it.
But we wanted to get your input as if there was something on there that, you know, was gonna hinder.
Ice machine.
Ice machine.
We can split that between.
That's all three of us. Yeah. Eh, well, people service even use. It, we got it two thousand and four and you gotta hit it all day long and keep, make ice.
It was huge when we got it.
In other words, it's shocking.
Well, is this a new one for six, for a six hundred dollar piece?
Yeah.
Fire department has an ice one. Can you go get your, get that ice and put it in the freezer?
I can extrude it on.
We got ice freezing department down there too.
Oh, my God.
I'm just saying.
We're just making a change.
I'm a rich shop, so y'all can do whatever you want there.
Eighteen hundreds would be split between three different departments.
Right.
Six hundred dollars if you get it apart.
And we'll put it in the breaker room. This one is out in the shop or a totter and crazy.
Yeah, it'd be a lot easier on.
Okay, so you don't, you don't have anything on here that's like, you, you, a stump grinder would be beneficial, your zero ton.
Stump grinder, ice machine, that'd be my top two deals. And after that, I don't care.
And you have, uh, two full-time employees on your team or three?
Yeah. I mean, I put that on there too, that we was told to do that, so.
Right. And, okay.
And then, uh, power them one later on. I got on there.
Yeah. All right.
I mean, that's, yeah, I'm good.
Um, what about the, the, um, paving? The sales tax fund is.
That's the gas tax or whatever.
That's, and that's earmarked for street paving?
Yeah, we usually do it every three years because it's gotta build up.
Yeah.
The way things are, I don't know if the money's there or where it is or.
Okay.
It ain't there.
So, I figured, I mean, we just figure that out as we go.
Okay.
But.
Okay.
They're due to be paid some more.
And then they can take a long time sometimes coming around and do it, right?
It won't be now till the next spring or.
The total was fixed the last year.
Yeah.
It was fixed the last year.
How many? It was three years ago.
It was three years.
Uh, I don't have my paper. Probably about eight or nine.
I know. It's been a while. I haven't seen any.
Plus they jacked the price on this.
Yeah.
Twenty-some dollars a ton that they didn't honor the contract that they had. They put it to us. Uh, uh, so I had to cut off about three strips because of that.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, I do too, because I went over fifty thousand.
Now, you know, just off the subject here, if you get a Kelsey jersey for Christmas, it's gonna have Swift's name on the back of it.
Yeah, I already got it.
Okay.
I just wanted all good.
(laughing). Thank you, O B.
Is that all you need?
Yeah.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm E B.
Melissa, I, I got something to bring up, uh, Christmas lights.
Yeah.
I got, uh, I got some bulbs that get us through the first go-around. But if we start having a bunch of burnouts up and down the highway, I'm gonna need a bunch of C sevens.
C sevens?
Yeah. Uh, I had a, it ain't much. I think it's under five hundred bucks. But, uh, last year we did put in the budget fifteen thousand for new decorations. And I brought y'all selection.
Mm-hmm. They were beautiful. I know. I was gonna start a, I was gonna start a GoFundMe page for Christmas decorations. Uh, that would be meaningful.
Yeah, but, uh, no, that was just one thing. I didn't know if we need to put it in there or just.
Okay. I might, you know what? I've got an idea to address this issue, so.
Okay.
Oh, no, you've got to have that. Do you need more out?
Hey, Kevin, you had on there equipment maintenance, you had that. You tired for your backhoe.
Yeah, they're due.
Huh?
They're due this year. They last about two years.
Fifteen thousand dollars?
Huh?
That, it says fifteen.
It'd be fifteen hundred.
Well, this says fifteen thousand.
Ooh, yeah, that's, that's totally wrong.
Should be fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred.
Okay.
For life, seven fifty feet.
Okay. That's better.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think I did that, but.
Somebody put an extra zero in it.
Oh, we gotta have the, gotta go out for bids for the salt. That's a necessity, right?
Didn't use much last year. I were in good shape, but we still need to go out for bid.
Okay. Right. So the salt.
With understanding, man, always get it when we need it, right?
Fifty tons would be all right. We need to go out for bid for it. It's two loads.
So fifty tons, is that less than ten thousand dollars, the quote you have in here, or is that?
That's probably hauling and stuff, yeah.
Okay. We better leave that in there. I'm gonna solve that same.
And, you know, I may not have to get it. We'll just see how it goes.
Just gotta make sure we got it in the conference.
Right. I'm, I'm in good.
So like Mark said, if you have a bid, you don't have to buy it till you need it?
Right.
Or if you need it?
Okay.
I didn't use twenty-five. I didn't use twenty-five, I didn't use one load last year. I bought seventy-five tons.
Gas department?
Terry.
I wouldn't know where we were having a meeting, so I don't know, I think.
That's okay, I can supply you with wine, maybe, maybe that extra gas, or. Enlighten us, you're in.
Oh, Daniel on Audemars says equipment maintenance supply, that's, that's just the normal stuff, we have to purchase and work if we have system operation. Uh, some of the stuff we're probably won't spend the money on, it depends on what happens with the metering. We're not changing out our meters for the new AI system. Till the electric's done and operating.
Heavy rain has been detected.
Normal.
Yeah, we're just gonna try and get the electric done and out of the way.
Okay.
Besides, they only bought us two hundred meters, so after he gets done, we get the two hundred in, and they work good, then we'll consider doing, it's probably gonna be another year before we really get into that.
Okay, um, what is the, um, thirteen?
Thirteen?
Yeah, what is that?
Oh, pressure recorders?
Anno seventeen pound?
Oh, Anno seventeen pounds, that's a must to have, you, you buy those to protect the steel pipe that's buried in the ground now.
Okay.
And they have gone up considerably since I bought them eight years ago or whatever. I about fell over and they told me the price on, this van probably nine bucks, Keith's. Not more.
Line twenty-one is something people might be disappointed in this year.
Oh, yeah. Alright, well, back up to capital improvements.
Sure.
Yeah, so much for raises. Let's have capital improvement. Okay, the napback bed was for the Chevy, you can scratch that if you want. The airline for the building, I'd like to keep that so we can get air at the, uh, regulated testing station and over by the welder and the bays for, when we're working on trucks for running air tools and stuff.
Okay.
We've got, we got the big air compressor, we just don't have it all piped in where the building needs to be, it's a pain in the butt when you gotta run hoses all over the place. Ah, the welder, okay. We had a good welder and somebody sold it. Uh, all I want is a good AC DC welder.
Okay.
So they can practice to do welding, to get qualified for welding on the gas system.
You down to buy another one?
Well, that's the price of it now, the first one I bought was only like twelve hundred bucks, they've gone up considerably too. The Milwaukee hammer drill, we use it quite a bit, so is the street department, the one we got now is burnt up. The mig welder, it's burnt up too. You don't necessarily have to have the mig welder, but if you got some lightweight stuff, it does make it a lot more convenient. Uh, the side-by-side for leak surveys and others, things to maintain or whatever. I, uh, I'm getting a pair of ears and I got a bad knee, and I can't, I can't walk again, especially that twenty-nine, twenty-two miles. This would be nice if we could get a side-by-side where we could do leak surveys of it, plus you could take it out for metering, working the parts with it, if they wanna use it. Uh, it's got a little dump bed on it, all it is is a two-cylinder, with the windshield on it and the top, that's all we're asking for.
Does the street, do we, we don't have anything like that in any of our departments?
Not through across country, we don't.
No?
Even, even our major.
They got it stuck a couple times, it's not gonna go right up. It's a pain in the butt. Uh, now the repair oil leak on the two thousand five three fifty, F three fifty? I'm not sure what it's gonna cost to fix that, I just pulled the number out of the air, three thousand dollars. I hear they gotta pull the whole cab off the top of it in order to fix the oil leak. I hope that's enough, we haven't been driving it very much, 'cause it does leak oil, and every time you pull into somebody's driveway, it pees on the driveway. Now this Juniper geode system, this is for your GPS to pinpoint the accuracy on your valves if you want, and the mapping of the feeder main and the mains here in town, or anything else you wanna use for it. I think you need to at least consider this, probably within the next year or two.
Okay.
And the last, the number nine, the McElroy sidewinder, that's a sidewall fusion machine, we've got one now, but we can't calibrate it. And it will work, I don't know why we have to calibrate it, 'cause every time we use it, it's worked great. I mean, if you want to, we could postpone that one. Uh, building supplies, that's just in case something happens in the building, we need to do some maintenance on it. And of course, number eleven, raises, yeah, it's gone. Uh, one-third cost track loader, oh, we already got that, so, annual fee for it though, we gotta pay that.
That's a must?
Well, we already bought it, so we just, we gotta pay an annual fee.
Okay.
And.
Annual fees, eight thousand dollars?
I thought that's what she told me. We paid a hundred and thirty-four thousand for this thing, I believe. The skid steer with the mulcher on the front of it?
Well, it was more than that.
So.
Anyway, I was.
What contract do I find for that?
What kind?
A lease on there. Oh, that's that big piece of equipment that was discussed and discussed, okay.
And the pressure chart recorders, uh, ones we've got, they couldn't make them. And really, the ones we got will work except for the one, the two hundred fifty pound downboarder station. That would be the only one I would really like to replace, but I'd like to find one that's gonna stay in business and have the chart paper for us that will operate right, and that we can calibrate.
Okay.
I'd at least like to replace that one, and they're like eight hundred bucks a piece.
So did you, um, meet with the guy that I hooked you up with through MPUA, Keith?
Yes, he's gonna be here Friday, he wants to talk to our new employee, explain what options that he might have with MPUA.
Now, will he, um, is there any kind of, um, um, assistance he can offer you as far as what you're struggling with that Shirley used to do down there in the office?
I'll find out further.
Yeah, ask him.
There might be some assistance, MPUA themselves might be able to help us with that, he can't, but he's.
Mm-hmm, he'll know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He should, or he'll steer me in the right direction.
Yeah, just make sure you, you tell him anything that you need, so we can, we can try to hit some resources, okay?
Yep. Soon as there was one other thing I wanted to talk to you about, I never got to, other than the truck, three fifty.
Who, who do you, um, who do we use, who would you use to do the repairs, Turpin or?
Either Turpin or D.C., these are the only two we can. I'm aware of, unless you wanna take it down to John, I'm aware of.
Why is that funny?
I like John, he's, he's a monster, you know.
He's supposed to boil it on K to fix his stuff.
Oh, Kevin Fanny?
Yeah.
He's usually booked.
Oh, I was just asking.
Uh, he's good as a can, if I can get him, get it in there, which, right now, it's a set, and we're not even using it, 'cause there's oil spots wherever it goes.
Is it possible for you to get, um, a couple quotes for us on the repairs and that?
Uh, yeah, yes, see if they can give you an idea.
Okay, anything else, Gary Lee?
Terry.
Terry, I'm sorry, I call you Terry Lee all the time.
I've been called worse.
Terry.
I couldn't resist that one. Yeah, I know. Yeah, a lot of stuff is metering that, on the bottom part of there, and we probably won't buy it unless we have to, have to have it for existing customers. Like what, right now, we got one that's got water in the index, but they have a hard time reading, it's gonna have to have the meter replaced and then sent off and repaired. And they're like two thousand dollars a pop, those roller meters, that's not with the M corrector. If you get one with an M corrector, you better add another twenty-five hundred to it. I tell you, some of this stuff has gone up immensely.
Yeah.
I guess that's all I got, I assume you have something else you wanna talk about, thank you.
So what's that total capex? That's what I'm working on.
Three hundred thousand.
That's a big deal, Jerry. There's nothing out of Jerry after you.
Yeah.
They know where you live.
Alright. I don't think it is, I guess, it won't end. Do you need me for anything else?
No, sir, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Well, I've got twenty-four thousand four hundred with the circled items at the top on capital improvements, and then the gas department equipment maintenance and supplies, what did he say about that? Those are the kind of things that he has to keep, so if we take seventy-five thousand minus the nine thousand two hundred, um, so sixty-five, just say sixty-five thousand plus twenty-four, so we're looking at about ninety thousand dollars in the gas department. Roughly. Um, Chief Anix isn't here this evening. Dell, did you submit anything to Tammy there, or wanna talk about anything with the airport budget?
The, uh, only thing is the, uh, the fuel.
Okay.
Uh, at my best estimation, we've got thirty-one hundred gallons of fuel, and that's probably gonna get us hopefully through the end of the year.
Okay.
In the past, we've always tried to buy the fuel in the fall of the year when the price was cheaper.
Okay.
And it will last us through the whole year. Um, I don't know, uh, when I heard last week that there was a spending freeze, I, I stopped, but anyhow, from going out for a bid to find out what fuel costs, so I don't know what it would cost.
Okay.
In the past, we bought eight thousand gallons at a time, the last time we bought fuel was four dollars and eighty-six cents a gallon.
Okay.
We're selling for five thirty-nine a gallon, fifty-three cents more. Like I said, we've got thirty-one hundred gallons still now, and hopefully that'll get us through, and if we have to buy some, possibly we could buy a smaller amount or share with another airport, that we don't have to come up with the, the full amount.
Why don't you add half that to see when the numbers come out?
But you sell at more than you purchase, so it's not.
Fifty-three cents a gallon more than.
So.
And we can, we can raise or lower that, since, since when Hader put that program on our computer at the airport, now I can take care of that without bothering the girls downstairs.
Okay.
But we try to stay in line with the other airports in the area.
Sure, sure. So why don't you get some quotes on maybe four thousand gallon?
Alright, alright, I'll find that out, and then, then if we do need it, we'll be able to do it, if not, then, you know, I mean, if we can, if we don't sell much, or weather turns bad, and there isn't many planes flying in, we might not, we might not need it for like the first few years.
Okay. And we were talking about something else, um, the runway lights?
No, I talked, I had mentioned that there's some fig cracks in the, in the ramp and the runway that really need to be filled. Um, it's something that the, the street department might be able to do, but I'm gonna call the, uh, state airport motor lady, Melissa Parker, and see if there may be some grant money available.
Okay.
To take care of that, I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, if not, let me know, so we can get those cracks taken care of before.
There will be a lot of them, and it would be probably expensive to.
Okay.
Um, but they're getting wider and wider, and the water's going in, and it'll just start busting it up, and then you, we don't want that to happen up in Key Cross.
Sure. Keep me in the loop on what you need on that issue then.
And then the other thing was the courtesy card about the, the, uh, insurance, I think there was a question about the insurance.
Yeah, John Russell's kinda throwing a fit about that expenditure, and it's, it's not a big expenditure, it's not something that's gonna break the bank or make any big issue. Um, and it was donated graciously by the VFW, it was expressed as a need from Dell, and, um, we can, it's not an issue to put it on our insurance, it was already checked on that. So I think the thing was that we can't afford the maintenance, well, it's a van, right? Um, so I, I don't foresee.
Service.
It's a service, um, I don't foresee it being a huge.
And we try to do everything we can out there, but.
Yeah.
And we rebuilt the, the sock pump that pumps out the, the, uh, pit around the tank, anything we can do to cut down costs, we can. And if it's on the vehicle, you know, oil changes.
Right, and I thought maybe, what if we reach out to J.C.'s or Turpin's or both, and we say, hey, let's get a magnetic, um, thing put on your, the van advertising, maybe we make the van an advertising thing, um, and they could pay, maybe offer to do so many oil changes a year for us, or something to that effect.
Well, it's worth a try.
Yeah, if it comes to be a big thing, I don't see it as a big thing, I, how do you offer about it?
I loaned my personal vehicle out twice this past week.
Yeah. Right.
There, there, there's some people coming from Albany, Missouri, and they went, I thought they were gonna go here town, but they walked on Paris.
This is a love concert.
Yeah, or that business.
And a guy called me yesterday morning, want, want my courtesy cards from St. Louis, he was gonna bring his wife up and go to lunch.
Uh-huh.
Uh, I offered him my, my vehicle, but then he decided not to call.
So it was already voted by you all that we accept this donation from the VFW, correct? So I said we'd get on it and get this van out there, get it licensed, so it can be put to use like it was intended. Yeah?
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you, Dell. No, we, there's no.
I mean, for things that are needed for office expense.
Oh, um, there's, the only thing that they needed downstairs is the computers are.
Yeah.
Are a problem, that's the only thing she expressed to me. So other than that, they're well aware that there's not gonna be any, you know, spending going on. Um, that's the thing that was mentioned to me from downstairs was, of course, filling some positions and, um, looking into their computers, getting their computers, getting better computers or something, so.
Um, she said there are currently twenty-seven applicants for the utility clerk and six for the city clerk, would you like to schedule another admin meeting?
We have an interview to come in for at five thirty tomorrow evening, I'm hoping to get a couple more, I'm waiting to get responses from calls that I sent out this morning. Um, do you, if, who's available to come tomorrow night for the interview process at five thirty? Okay, I've got two people.
I'm sure.
Okay, do you have any ideas, okay? You're out, okay, oh, that's right, yeah, so, um, do you want to go ahead and have the admin meeting then, after the interviews and go through some?
You can't because it's, it went ahead on Thursday.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
You could do it, uh, Thursday.
Thursday evening, the ability with the gentleman, no? No? Uh, Monday night next week, do we have anything? Seems like we're talking about something for Monday night next week.
I think we're gonna set the admins meeting on Monday night.
That's right, yeah, right.
So just to have Monday night.
Monday evening at six, so Monday evening at six, your admin meeting, we'll go through some other of the applications, or more applications. I'll try then to get, um, I'll try to get a couple interviews scheduled for five thirty, maybe we can squeeze in two interviews. I'll try to get a couple interviews scheduled for five-thirty. Maybe we can squeeze in two interviews before the admin meeting at six?
And then she sent out an email, says the September twenty-twenty-three sales tax needs to be paid by October thirty-first. Since we do not have another meeting until after that day, I need to request an electronic vote to approve the payment. I need to get this paid in the mail so that we do only incur any fees or penalties. Can we do that now since it's the budget?
Sure, yeah. You wanna go ahead with that since you're admin person?
Uh, yes. Just another thing, so, um, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and pay our September twenty-twenty-three sales tax.
You got a motion? Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed, motion carries? Um, I gotta write that down. Motion. Um...
What we wanna do about this testy on, because you sent out an email that said that I don't think Tamatha got it, so they're not using it. And I don't think she's aware of that, because she didn't get an email and used an email to everybody saying not to use it.
No, I didn't say not to use it. I didn't say that...
Yes, you did.
No.
They're not using it.
I didn't say not to use it. I said it needs to be looked at.
Well, they're not using it, to my knowledge, or something. My admin's on it, I need to know they're not.
What was the issue on?
Tession, uh, we wanted to...
What's your opinion on it?
I would give it something. It could be beneficial, although it's an absolute must-meet.
I would feel more comfortable with not going with them if I felt like I had somebody competent to do that job downstairs. I, they handle all the, the taxes and everything and...
It's, it's a hassle right now, but...
If that doesn't get done, we're gonna be back in the same boat of paying back taxes. I, I don't wanna have to pay for it.
Maybe, maybe we'll get somebody hired.
That's what I was thinking.
Right now, it's kinda a hassle getting all data out, but after you get the votes put out, we'll be...
Jackie has offered to do the payroll, as we said, you know, we didn't have anybody.
She did? She said that to you?
She said she would do it.
Pardon me, but why is Tamatha not doing the payroll?
That's kinda...
We have, we're having discussions...
By part of that side, but that confuses the crap out of me.
Yeah.
You don't know?
We're gonna lose some employees. They're just gonna retire.
If they keep it present.
Yeah, some people, he said, that he works with are looking for a new one.
I didn't know everybody was so upset about it until last Friday, when I had Turtle and Forgive Me. That's what I call him, and I don't even know what the man's real name is. But he came in very upset.
I don't get what the issue is. The thing I'm hearing is they don't want something that can track where they're at. I don't think they realize that it just geofences to make sure that you're inside of a lot of area. It doesn't track where you are outside of that.
Do you have to put in a code? Do you have to put in a code every time you clock in, clock out for, in for lunch, out for lunch?
A specific code? You can't just hit the app button on your phone and then it comes up clock in, clock out? You have to punch in a phone?
You should be able to do either way.
Yeah.
I heard it's a special code.
You, you should be able to do either way.
Like choose by factor.
I just don't want the tax, I don't want that stuff to go unpaid again, you know?
It's too much.
I mean, is it something where you could take a particular department out of it and have it just randomly done up because of how inconsistent they're, they're...
But I was told this when they were trying to do it the other day, that they couldn't get it to cooperate.
And it's because, so they're trying to log into it on the web browser itself instead of using the initial link from email. Have to use that link, otherwise it will not work. As soon as they gave me that information, everybody, dude, it's good. We haven't had any issues since. I mean, it's just, it's just working the bugs out at the beginning of it like anything. Give it a month or two, and there shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
I said some of them are... Just throw some, fix some other ones or so.
Okay. Appreciate the input.
Thank you.
All right. Um, did you guys have a chance to look over that utility thing? What's the plan? I say we, we need to start initiating, we need to put a T S A out there that we are back to, if your, your utility payments received after the due date, uh, penalties will be assessed, and we are...
Can you do the A H C shit already?
Yeah, we need to get that back done.
Do I want to?
It's, it's helpful. I mean, a lot of people, it's, it's easier for them, and I think they're more apt to go on there. Yeah, myself, I use it too, um...
Cause it's not good at this month, right?
No, I can't remember.
Now, is that's renewal of your, your app?
Budget.
Budget, thank you!
Yeah.
Why, we're here tonight. Your budget.
Um... But then...
I'm sorry, but you can't...
Well, we have... Yeah, I mean, my issue is we, we, right, we've got people that have been delinquent before July that we need to start saying, hey, you're not delinquent.
I would say anybody prior to July.
I'd say we, like, Godwin said, yeah, oh, really? Start sending out letters, get letters sent out?
Anybody prior to July, cause they have been delinquent before that.
Yeah. I mean, Alderman and Osborne just told me that there's a customer that hasn't paid since,
Since February.
since February. What the heck? How does that happen?
Yeah, February thirteenth is when they make their last payment.
Ooh, and that is during the time that you can shut their utilities off. We're about to enter the time where you you don't get to shut them down.
Here's one that's made June fit last month.
There's a name.
Cause you have to give her some of these high pack lines. Horns and this, you go back to that play with, you know, you can see up there with yet, like some of these people got thirty-nine hundred dollars and twenty-five. Is, is the number true or is it a mistake?
I know they've been going through them, and, you know, I don't know how, if they've got through this whole list, but I know they have gone through some of them.
Because some people on there, I, you know, I can't believe that the bill's that high and they never pay, so...
Okay.
That's a...
Oh, yes, right.
Yeah, yeah, there are online, there's a few out there that's on the city.
Can I ask a dumb question?
There's no dumb question in my world.
Well, some pets in my world there is, but if you, if we have normal, and I know that's a bad word, but...
Oh, yeah, different word, Debbie. Normal is only a setting on a washing machine.
Okay, well, if our washing machine was working correctly,
Okay.
and we had got to collect all of the utilities
Okay.
that were supposed to be paid, what is our gross income a month?
From utilities?
From utilities, supposed to be, in our, in our minds, on average.
I don't know, because we have always tried, auditors have always tried to encourage us to get away from the mindset that utilities are a moneymaker. That we're, and I know it's bogus, but they're...
But they've always been our moneymaker.
It has, but I think, I think, uh, I know what you're trying to ask, and I don't have an answer for you. I don't. I'm just gonna start with you. Um, but from, the auditors are like, you can't think of it as it's, it's your moneymaker. You think of it as it goes back into those pots for those electric to be utilized for the distribution or the, it can also be a percentage. Where we've kinda screwed up with the budgetary process is a percentage of that, though, needs to go into, um, administrative fees into their pot because those ladies are working with those utilities. So, um, I, I got your question, and it's the same question I have. It's the same question I have.
To even start a budget, you have to know what your income's gonna be.
Exactly, and I asked, I said, um, Gary, can you, can you run me a report that shows our monthly expenditures and our monthly revenue? But he, he did, but it's, it's not accurate because he had to pay so many things that were, hadn't been paid
Right.
that our expenditures were, shoot, you know, way off the chart. Um, and then some things were coded wrong, so they were maybe put as a expenditure, and they should have been put in as a, a revenue somehow. So I didn't even get clear numbers to see, see that, so I could tell, okay, this is coming in and this is going out, so we're good. That's what I wanted to see, and simple, you know, thinking of my checking account, what's my bills and what's...
Right. I mean, and I love the real estate tax that we bring in
Uh-huh.
that, that are collected, excuse me, that's what, and has to be broke down into the library taxes, school taxes, and all that.
Right.
But we've got fourteen hundred living households in this town that are people in them, approximately. And if you averaged everybody's real estate tax to about six hundred bucks, we've got some that are three thousand, some that aren't,
Uh-huh.
some that are way below six hundred, but that's eight hundred thousand plus of revenues that gets distributed. So to me, that's another, we need to know this budget item that's coming in is revenue.
Right.
And...
And I see that, I see that on, I remember seeing those on the, the revenue, um... Robin, are, are you still dead set? You're not gonna come join us? You came tonight, so you're, you're still kinda... Okay, just wanted to know.
So the training process you're talking about for, for somebody you're gonna hire is still using Uli and Palmyra and...
Right, and also...
possibly Canton.
Possibly Canton.
Cause that's a big issue.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's what keeps somebody from coming.
Certainly.
Does Merma have stuff?
Merma does not, but NPUA does. Um, like, uh, I spoke to a lady that is, um, record-keeping genius with NPUA, and that's what she does. So she, as soon as we get somebody hired, um, she's gonna come in and start showing them how to file and how, what records need to be purged and, and that kind of business. Um, as far as G Works, uh, learning the G Works system and the utility, I'm, I'm gonna be leaning on the, the gals that do it every day, the, the clerks from Palmyra, um, Canton, George has been really in their ears saying, hey, you gotta go help them, you gotta go help them. So I'm hoping they send a person, Shalina Dennis Klußmeier, he said that he would be willing to help. So I'm, I'm cooling all the resources I can with also going out to NPUA and, and, uh...
And G Works, I assume, has some sort of training manuals?
G Works has a training, and actually Kristen, um, I never can think of that gal's last name in Palmyra. Um, she's actually getting together, uh, a training manual for us, writing one up, but then I talked to Jackie, and Jackie was like, Melissa, I have it on the H drive, and I'm like, are you kidding me? So, um, I'm gonna have her print that, and I'm gonna put it in a binder, and I'm gonna be like, we have a tr, you know, and see what that looks like, but...
So this all gets back to your question earlier. This sounds like an administrator's job.
What?
What you're doing, you keep, you're saying that you're doing this and you're doing that.
Uh-huh.
It, shouldn't our administrator be doing that?
Well, somebody's gotta do it, and I, I,
Yeah.
I, it has to be...
I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It seems like you're trying to take on a bunch of hats, but it's, to me, it seems like you, if you have the qualified people, qualified administrator, and if you want to get the caliber of a qualified clerk, you're saying some of these things about training now that Robin didn't have. That they, that, those answers weren't there for Robin. If you're gonna get somebody the caliber of Robin, I hope that we don't end up with someone that's not qualified because we don't have the proper training.
Well, when, when I spoke with Robin, and she can attest to this, when she called me on the phone and we were, and, you know, she wanted to talk to me about why she didn't think it was a good fit for her, um, I, I expressed that I was in the works of making these connections, but, you know, I, I understand the apprehension.
I'm not saying it.
Yeah, and when we have these interviews, we're gonna, we're gonna reiterate. We're gonna be like, hey, it's stressful down there, but we will get you the supports you need. We're gonna, we're gonna, you know, try our damnedest moving forward to make sure training is implemented across the board. Everybody's cross-trained with every position down there. So when somebody's sick or somebody decides it's time to retire, there's somebody that can step into that position and at least have a binder, at least have the know-how to get through the daily operations until they pick it up better. And that's how, um, Palmyra, um, she was like, the city clerk was like, Melissa, we made sure everybody was cross-trained in every department, so, you know, that can happen, the progression can happen forward if somebody decides to retire, so that just hasn't been done here, and I don't care why, but that is my main objective moving forward is to make sure it's corrected. And it's the councils as well. We all understand that that was a, a big boo, and it needs to be fixed, so...
We're glad you do it.
Thank you.
So Robin, you can let us know.
I think you're making great strides. I'm very proud of that.
Yes.
So when is Gerald's next budget fat-cutting meeting?
Um, I, I I don't know. I just, I feel like we're just stuck. I feel like we're stuck because I don't have any numbers to go off of, and I know you all feel the same way. It's like we're going into this blind, and the only thing we can do is do the negative crap that's cutting the fat. Um, Debbie, I, I know with D T M C, what your...
Oh, that's not what I'm feeling.
Okay, but I just, okay, but I just wanted to, I, I know, you're probably well aware that...
It's not there. We're not here about, I'm not here, I'm here as Debbie Kendrick, a property owner and a businessman.
Well, I wanted to say something while Lori was here, just, Council, I know we discussed this before, we're, we're making our, our workers go without raises probably and really trim the fat out of the budget, and it's just, it's just not there.
But that's business, and you all are conducting a multi-million dollar business here. And we, we appreciate what you're doing to try to pull it together, cause it's not easy.
Did you have another question or input before I interrupted you?
Uh, next...
Next meeting.
For this, for the budget.
So Monday night, we have an administrative meeting at six P M.
You all had it till the thirtieth, right, for October to get this done?
Well, actually, no. I think we put that on ourselves, but according, and I've got the state statute, what just happens is you keep operating off of the previous year's budget until you implement and vote in a new budget.
Would y'all have partials of that?
Yeah.
I didn't have the electric department in it, so I... No utility funds or anything like that that I got from Kim for that in May.
I don't know if it's the same one I have, but I was just trying to refer to that.
Mine had the actual eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one actual.
It says City, Mountain City, twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
Budget, yeah.
Yeah, but I was, yes, of things that aren't in here, so, right.
That's two.
And, and I question, I, is that?
Ozes, if, if it is gonna carry over into a new, uh, you all could let the targets, Oaks will have to get new quotes each month.
Yes, I understand.
Uh, those will fluctuate.
Okay.
On, uh, Tession.
Yes.
I'm trying to start a little work rate here, or, the reason why, to see on this email says that you sent out, I would like to put the whole ongoing live Monday, pulling out of this.
I would like to. I don't have the authority to without your vote.
State kids are not using it, right on the street departments.
Well, they're gonna have to until we stop it.
You know, you said earlier you had one point two million dollars in the bank, and that's, and, and that is what's there, but that isn't all you have to operate on, because you're gonna have money coming in from the county bills.
Right, that was just what kinda was roughly left after Gary got through sending out all those tax payments.
Right, so you've got, so in order to, to do these budgets, you've gotta know how much is coming into the gas department.
Yes.
And you, and that's hard to decipher because it might not be cold, might not use as much forgiveness or much of the water or electricity, but you've gotta know how much you got coming in, so you can make the budget, like Debbie said. And you're not working on just one point two million dollars. You've got more money coming in.
Mm-hmm. And that's why I asked for revenue and expenditure premiums.
Right. I don't think you guys are lost. I don't think that, that, that we're going down in smoke.
I don't think so. It's just the unknowing part right now and not being able to pin down, anybody able to pin down those numbers. But I did, I just, I wanna say that I did express to our city administrator that, hey, your focus needs... your focus needs to be budgetary and finance. So get into G-Works, ask Jackie questions why she's here, and get in that system and start learning it and operating it.
Leave everything else alone?
Yeah, yeah. We don't need any forms or implementation of new things, we need to figure out what's broken old.
Well, you need your.
And she's wonderful, she's wonderful at the implementation of, of policies and, I mean, that is certainly her strong suit, um, so.
Uh, along those lines, uh, would you be able to speak with Tammy the on our payroll? Getting an additional line for, uh, overtime grants?
Additional line for the overtime grants, yes.
That's another thing that when you look at the payroll for the police department, it, it looks kind of skewed, in my opinion, because these overtime grants, it looks as if we are paying all of that overtime, however, it's all being reversed, so it's not counted until it's our payroll.
So how's that get?
Looks like it comes to.
How's that get put in the bank, Zach? Is that an ace, automatic ACH from, um, the grantor, or is that a check that comes?
I honestly do not know, cause it goes straight to CBO, this is not.
And who, who is that grant from, what is the grant?
It all depends on who's sponsoring it for that grant period, sometimes it's mag, sometimes it's that, uh, you know, the St. Patrick's Week, they, they have different, uh, different presenters for it then, it's just whoever is sponsoring, putting that money out for that event. So it, it can change every time.
That could be part of, maybe some of the confusion in the coding downstairs, if it is an automatic.
But it's something that's, it's based on a grant, it's not based upon.
So some of them will be for seatbelt, seatbelt enforcement, some will be for drunk driving, some will be for uh, speed, uh, speed enforcement, things like that, it all just depends on what time of year it is and who's sponsoring.
Do we wanna schedule another, uh, why don't, um, let's do it towards the end of next week, is let's give Tammy the a chance to get in that G-Works and see what she can come up with. So, um, next Thursday evening?
Second?
Uh huh. Um, six o'clock? Thursday, what's that, when you say that date was?
November second.
Thursday, November second, at six o'clock, we're gonna attempt this again. See what new information we can get. Alright, any other questions that I can try to answer? Alright.
One, one thing, um, one of the main things, we, we know we had a coding issue and that was creating a problem, but they haven't been able to do an audit so that you can get up-to-date audits for potential grants for the future. Uh, we're still have this huge problem with being able to give correct numbers to even do an audit.
Yes.
Or, so, we don't, we, we still don't know where we're at with getting an auditor here and.
Well, we've sent out RFQs, uh, to about thirty individuals, um, and I reached out by phone to seven kind of local, like Luck Humphrey, Wade Staples, and, and got no's because they're already booked out right now, or they're, you know, Luck Humphrey, I think he's wanting to retire, so he's like, I'm not taking anybody new. A lot of them aren't taking any new clients, they're full, um, but, uh, and I got a response from one auditing firm out of, uh, oh, by Troy. And, but they can't get to us until February, January, February next year, that's too late for me, I want somebody in here, as soon as we get some financials, you know, I want somebody in here into November, you know, start working on it. Um, but I did have a lead, I did have a lead from NPUA, it is who Shalina's using, uh, oh, it's a firm out of Jeff City, Baker and Tilly, Baker and Tilly. Um, so NPUA, Connie Ford with NPUA is like working on them and I'm working on them, so we're trying to get them to say yes. Because they are considered professional services, and actually, if they say yes, and I know that they've got good rec- um, recommend, uh, recommendation, then I can say, yes, we're taking you, we don't have to wait for those, anybody else to respond to that letter.
Is that for the audit, mayor, or is that to help us get?
That's for the audit, and if I understood her correctly, they also can offer financial assistance to come in here and, um, because I think Kluusmeier said, they just sent them boxes of paperwork and financials and, so they're kind of in a mess too, so I'm thinking preliminary audit processes they can help us with as well, so, fingers crossed.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So hopefully, they can help us. Uh, Debbie, you sent me something, I, it just triggered my memory, cause I'm always trying to think of what people send me and if I made the contact with them.
It's a company out of Iowa. You, you talked to somebody before the last council meeting, they came in and helped reestablish a community.
You talked to Aaron Services, I think.
Yes, I did, yes, I did, thank you.
It's similar to that, but they deal with smaller towns.
Okay.
And that was that link I sent to you.
Okay.
Um, I got the information from Main Street program last year, I think, but they do all city government stuff to help small communities do better.
Okay.
And, so they, and they, I don't think they break the bank on their costs, if there's too many other communities that use them.
Yeah, yeah, alright.
And maybe not, I don't know.
Check it out, I, I just remembered that in my messages. If we don't have anything else, let's have a motion to wrap this up tonight.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn with a second and a second, all of you in favor?
Uh.
Motion to adjourn, thank you all for coming.
Thank you guys.